This time, Demetrius will lead us in our pledge.
Let's be to the light of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And this, the school board meeting for Polk County, May 15, 2018 is called to order. Demetrius, could we ask you a few questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What's your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Math, wonderful. What would you like to do when you grow up?
Police officer.
You want to be? A police officer? And this lady behind you will be happy to take your application. And what do you like most about your school? There are no wrong answers. Lunch?
Yeah, he's like, I agree, I agree.
Well, Demetrius, thank you so much for leading us in our pledge of allegiance. We appreciate it. You did a wonderful job. By the way, do you have anyone here with you? Is somebody, does somebody come with you from your school? And could you, could you tell us who that is?
I'm Kristen Fowler, I'm principal at Crystal Lake Elementary. You also have our assistant principals, Juan Yada Perry.
Very good. Thank you all for joining us. So the first item on our agenda, well, first of all, do you have any revisions to the agenda, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, we do. Item E3, our in the Capitol Competition Award ad item. Item C7, minutes of April 24th, 2018 work session, add backup. Item C10, new administrators, add backup. Item C16, Bartow Senior High, master plan, replace backup. Item C55, administration and instructional recommendations, replace backup. Item R64, Polk Charter Academy, new charter contract, add resolution 2017-18-09. Item R67, resolution 2017-2018-08, sales tax referendum, add backup. Item R68, increased funding for HB769 litigation. That concludes the revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the May 15, 2018, school board meeting agenda as revised.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the agenda for May 15, 2018, with the revisions as noted.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to accept the May 15, 2018, school board meeting agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, we have some special recognitions?
Yes, we do. First, I'd like to ask school board member Lori Cunningham to please step to the front for our special recognitions. Our senior coordinator of visual arts, Nancy Purie, will now come forward to recognize the art in the Capitol winner with the Florida State Representative, Sam Kilabrew.
So, Madam Superintendent, the board, I am pleased to introduce to you Representative Sam Kilabrew, who is going to talk to you about the art in the Capitol competition this year and present the award to our student.
Thank you. Meredith needs to come up here. This is, she's the star in all this. The, they have the, Capitol has the Capitol Art Competition, and they take one student out of every county. I was lucky enough that Meredith is in my district, so that's why I get to come and do this. I was telling Nancy and Lori that I come in in the bottom of the Capitol, and I saw these, all these different art things on the wall, and I stopped one day and started looking at them, and there was nothing from Polk County. So I made a note, and we needed to find out, how do we get part of this? Well, at the other end, from down there, that's where all their other art is, and that's where Meredith was. So I found that. But this is a, this is Meredith's painting. You can probably tell them a little, it's pencil or...
Yes, pencil.
But there's just one of 67 counties, and then there's also a certificate from the Department of Education for her.
Maybe you could turn so the audience could see it. It is truly a remarkable print. And we need to get her teacher in this, too. Please go up.
Meredith Smith attends Davenport School of the Arts, and her teacher is here today, and her teacher's name is Kendall Rogers, second-year teacher.
Congratulations, Meredith.
Our senior coordinator of strategic partnerships, Jeanette Crowley, will now come forward to recognize the Bridge Program students.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeanette Crowley. I'm sorry, I didn't hear if there was an introduction, so I apologize. But I have more of our amazing students with us from the Bridge Program, which are student ambassadors for Polk County Public Schools. And it's an honor to work with them, and they've been working really hard on their 30-second elevator pitch. And just to remind everybody, since we had students here last month giving their 30-second speech, the student's task was to develop a 30-second elevator speech about their school to include information about what makes their school special and how their school and the district have prepared them for the future. So I'm gonna let them start.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jan Serrando, and I am a junior at the best school in Polk County, Lake Gibson Senior High School, where we have the greatest principal in the nation, Mr. Ryan Van. Our school offers a variety of rigorous courses that challenges the minds of our students, and clubs in sports, including swimming, golf, beach volleyball, bass club, judicial club, which I'm the director of. As you can see, our school is meant to suit any child who desires to be a brave. If there is one word to describe LG, it would be diverse. So I encourage all of you to come out to our graduation and witness the intelligent braves Lake Gibson has shaped. It is on May 18 at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
My name is Kelsey Gross. I'm 16 and a sophomore at Winter Haven High School. I'm on the school's robotics team, and we have gone to Worlds two years in a row, the only team to have done that in Polk County. Winter Haven has many different academies and clubs for anyone's interest. The school also has a program called Cambridge, which I am a part of, which allows students to earn college credits in different ways than IB, dual enrollment, or collegiate would. The school has prepared me for the future by allowing me access to soft skills such as creating relationships with new people. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Aleah Cruz, and I'm a junior at Frostproof Middle Senior High School. My school is family-oriented, oriented, and tries to build a friendly environment and a relationship between the students and administration. Building these relationships are quite easy, since I am from a small town. Most of those who work at my school have grown up in the area and have also went to the school. The faces that we see are, become familiar because we see them around the community. With coming from a small community, everyone gets involved in showing Bulldog pride for my school and coming to sports and club events being held. My school does not only focus on building the relationships with the students, but also strives to push the students to do their best academically. My school offers many AP and honor courses that the students may choose from, and the teachers are always there if a student is struggling with the material being taught in the classroom. My school's senior class this year is, has half graduating with honors. As our mission statement says, "Our mission is to provide a safe learning community where students can achieve academic success and develop into responsible, productive members of our global society." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Salvucci, and I'm a junior at Summerlin Academy High School, and that's located in Bartow, Florida. I'm the captain of the Summerlin Rifle Team. Summerlin cadets are bound by the motto, "I can if I try." Summerlin cadets are required to take an ROTC class where our mission is to motivate young people to become better citizens. To achieve this goal, Summerlin establishes a set of core values such as scholarship, honor, leadership, and citizenship. Though Summerlin is known for its physical challenges, it's also known for the teaching of excellent skills and duties of leadership by our instructors. Summerlin is not just to prepare you for the military, but to prepare you for a higher education. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Musselman, and I'm a junior at George Jenkins High School in Lakeland. Our school offers a wide variety of opportunities, ranging from sports to six different academies. I participate in medical and digital design, which are both certified as model academies. I also participate in varsity track and cross-country. Our school ensures and readies us to, our school readies and motivates us by ensuring that we graduate with the skills necessary to be successful in a college or career. I have experiences by participating in dual enrollment and AP classes. That way, I will graduate with the majority of my AA. George Jenkins does its job in preparing us, so it is our job as students to ask ourselves, where is this going to take us? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Athena Reynolds, and I'm a junior at Lake Gibson High School. Lake Gibson stands out amongst other Polk schools by offering numerous academies, including the Academy of Future Educators, where students begin their professional portfolios by creating lesson plans, preparing visual aids, and hands-on experience with younger students. And the Academies of Business and Finance prepare the next generation for careers of accounting, banking, investments, and entrepreneurship. From culinary to biotechnology, Lake Gibson has something for everyone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Haven Twyford, and I'm a junior at Winter Haven High School. Winter Haven is special because we offer a variety of unique academic, athletic, and extracurricular activities, and we excel in them. I'm part of the Cambridge Academic Program, which in Polk County is only offered at Winter Haven High School. I'm captain of our girls' swim team, which has many regional titles, and I'm improv captain of the only improv troupe in Polk County. In these activities, I've been given opportunities for leadership and learning that many people don't get until college or until in a workplace environment. I take pride in being able to attend my school. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Gracie Player. I'm a junior at Frostproof Middle Senior High School. My school has around 1,100 students, grades 6 through 12. My school offers a wide range of academic opportunities, as well as over 40 different clubs and sports available to all of our students. Our extracurricular activities are a major contributor to our school pride. Bulldog pride is something that is very, to our school, community, as well as myself. It is what brings our school and community together. Since Frostproof is a small town, most of our supporters and volunteers attended Frostproof High School themselves. They have Bulldog pride built into their DNA. Now they come back to help support the new generation of Bulldogs. We have such a unique family atmosphere at Frostproof Middle Senior High School because we've all grown up around each other in our community. Whether we played city league sports together and our future teacher was a coach, or our families hung out at different community events, everyone can fit in at Frostproof Middle Senior High School. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lucas Porter. I'm a junior at Summerlin Military Academy. What makes Summerlin really stand out from all the other schools is the unique opportunities that we offer. At Summerlin, German, Russian, and Japanese are taught to better prepare those who may join the military service for more diplomatic jobs. Our ROTC teams, such as drill, rifle, and raiders, teach discipline and cohesion, as well as serve to keep the students involved in the Summerlin family. The unique elective Summerlin has to offer are akendo, which is Japanese sword fighting, English dressage equestrian, scuba, and archery. These opportunities, along with the students who participate in them, are what makes Summerlin Academy Summerlin Academy, where we're not just an academy, but the academy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. What an excellent job. Next, I'd like to ask Supervisor of Elections, Lori Edwards, will now come forward to recognize schools for voter registration.
The Supervisor of Elections Office visited 21 high schools during March and April to offer your students an opportunity to register to vote, and 1,038 of those students took us up on the offer. Today, we're here to offer recognition to the schools that registered the most new voters. Lake Gibson High School is the winner as the most number of registrants, and I understand that Melinda Diaz is here to accept this award. And I have to say, Melinda and I have been up here before in previous years, so she must be doing something right at Lake Gibson, because this is not your, the first time winning. Congratulations. Also, our other winner today is from Gauze Academy. Gauze won because they had the highest percentage of eligible students that registered to vote during the drive. And I understand Mr. Dariford Jones is here? There he is. So I just want to thank the school board for offering us this opportunity, and of course, each, not just these high schools, but all the participating high schools, with their cooperative effort in this. So thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you, Lori. Our senior coordinator of library services, Lindsay Persson, and senior coordinator Nancy Purie of Visual Arts, will present the new Books Bridge wrap and introduce the winners of the contests.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lindsay Persson, and I'm here today to present a new design, and great thanks to Nancy Purie for all of her help with this. For those of you who may not know, the Books Bridge Program is a literacy outreach program. It's funded by Title I, and it's managed by Library Media Services. Our three buses, school buses, that have been outfitted as classrooms, each are staffed with a media specialist and a paraprofessional. They go out into communities, and the main mission this year has been to support early literacy. So we are partnering with pre-K students and also community sites where pre-K students and their families visit. Our teams deliver literacy lessons and also give away a free book every time they see those students. So we are helping to build home libraries of very young students. That said, the wraps on these buses are peeling off, so it was time for a new design. And as I said, Nancy Purie helped us to create a competition, a countywide competition, juried by some folks vested in the program, and we would like to present the new design and also recognize the winner this evening.
So, thank you, Dr. Persson. We are thrilled. This was a countywide competition, and we had, we had schools across the county in elementary, middle, and high submit designs. And I was really thrilled to see that the design chosen by the committee was an elementary student's artwork. And each school did it in a different way. We let them decide how to do it. And this year, it was, or for this, for many years, it will be Pinewood Elementary. So Ms. Campbell and Ms. Stewart are here to represent, and their art teacher, Betsy Reeves, is here. And our winning student and her father are here, Trakira, okay, grandfather, Trakira McFarland. Come on down, Trakira. We're very proud. It is beautiful. Hold it up, just like, okay, now come over here so the board can see you. Isn't that beautiful? Isn't that amazing? Right? Elementary school, very talented young lady. Trakira, come up here. Let me take that from you. Come up to the podium and let them talk to you for a minute.
So what grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade. And what inspired you to create that?
Well, there is that new, there is that story, that story movie, and I just thought about it, and I just thought about, like, just putting books in the mouse.
How awesome. That is absolutely beautiful. You did a terrific job. We're so proud of you. Can't wait to see it on the bus, though. So, congratulations, and let's come up here and get a photo.
That concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and thank, and special thank you to all of our recipients here today. We appreciate so much everything you do for our school district. At this time, I would like to invite anyone from the audience who would like to come forward and speak to any item on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to an item on the agenda, please come forward and do so at this time. Please, please give us your name, please, for the, for the record.
Hi, I'm Sandy Doyle. I'm a teacher at Gibbon Street Elementary, where I've been for 32 years. Excuse me, this is one of my students. Another one behind me. I'm not sure what I want to tell you today, but I do want to ask that in the future, when you decide the fate of a school, such as you're doing ours today, that you give us a voice in the process. Ms. Bird came to us two weeks ago and told us that there's no school in our school next year, unless you're teaching three and four-year-olds. So first, we'd heard of it. None of us had a chance to do anything about it, say anything about it, give any input in any way. And we feel like it was done very secretively, and we understand the financial implications of our school. We understand the need for something to happen, and we may indeed support your decision in the end, but we don't feel like we were treated properly in the process. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is one of our, this is one of our parents.
I am coming to you as not a school nutrition, but as a parent from the community. These kids need this school. I started at this school. I am full circle back at this school, working. I see these kids daily. I know what these teachers go through. And half of these kids don't even wake up in time to walk to school. They're late. A bus is not gonna help them. They need this school. They need to be able to have this at home. This is a home for these kids away from them. Sometimes this is the only meal that they get, the only adult supervision that they get. I live out there. I see these kids on the road, on the corner. The only station they have is Gibbon Street Elementary. I have two kids that go there. My oldest two just graduated high school, and they all started there. I have a grandson. I want my grandson to go to this school when he becomes of age. This is a home for not only the kids, but for us. Coach Doyle taught me growing up, and I, like I said, I am full circle back at this school, and I don't want to see this school shut down for little kids or for offices. These kids out there, y'all are not, we need, this community needs, you understand what I'm saying? I cannot get the words out, because I'm the only parent that came, and if one person can make a change, I'm hoping I can make that change for this school. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you give us your name, please, for the record?
Juanita Lopez.
Thank you. To be clear, this is not an item on the agenda to be voted on this evening, so you're most welcome to speak if you'd like, but we're, it's not an item, it's not a matter before the board this evening.
We've just been briefed today like you, and we're gonna talk about it and discuss it, and so we're nowhere near making a decision today.
Okay, can I ask a question in on this?
Of course.
Why are these people being told that they have to be packed up and out by May 24th? Why, why is that happening?
We're gonna, we'll defer that to the superintendent, and we'll ask one of her staff to get with you on that. Thank you. And again, you're most welcome to speak, but it's not on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone who would like to speak to an item on the, on the, today's, this evening's agenda? Okay. So at this time, we have two sets of minutes to approve. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 24th, 2018 work session.
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes of the April 24th, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the April 24th, 2018 school board meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes of the April 24th, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And they asked me to give them just a moment for y'all to record your votes. Apparently, I have been moving too quickly in the past meetings. The next item is approval of the consent agenda, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Superintendent, I understand we have two administrator announcements?
We have two. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Matthew Lassiter as Assistant Principal of Kathleen Senior High School. Mr. Lassiter previously served as the Assistant Principal II of Mulberry Middle School. He attended the University of Alabama, earning a bachelor's degree in history. He went on to earn his master's degree in teaching from Florida Southern College and gained educational leadership certification from the University of South Florida. Matt Lassiter.
Thank you, everybody. Just wanted to take this minute here to thank the board. I appreciate everything that you guys have done. Thank the superintendent. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My regional, Tammy Dawson, thank you very much. My principal, Johnny Jackson, I do appreciate this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to assisting in moving this school to the direction that we want to move it, improve the rates of students graduating, and just build a bigger community to overall assist with this school. And I do appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of John Hill as Deputy Superintendent of Polk County Schools. John Hill has previously served as the Principal of Arvindale Senior. He attended Southeastern College, earning a bachelor's degree in social science. He went on to earn his master's degree in educational leadership from St. Leo. Welcome, John Hill. Good evening.
Mr. Wilson, School Board Chair, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Byrd, fellow colleagues, and stakeholders of Polk County Schools. It is my honor and privilege to serve as the next Deputy Superintendent of Schools. I am very excited about the opportunity to work closely with our outstanding superintendent, board members, district leaders, school-based leaders, teachers, and support staff to put students first and to ensure that every student is prepared to succeed in college, career, and citizenship. I am tremendously blessed to have had so many wonderful mentors and role models invest themselves in me throughout my life. I would like to take just a few minutes to honor and recognize a few of them. My father, Dan Hill, instilled in me the standard of dignity and respect for all and an uncompromising work ethic. My mother, Mary Hill, demonstrated the importance of emotional intelligence and compassion. My soulmate, best friend, love of my life, and my number-one fan, my wife, Charlene, is a living example of how love can transform our lives. My grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, my younger brother and sister, Jimmy and Libby, my sons Drew and David, their families, my grandchildren, the Simpson family, taught me that there is nothing more important than devotion to family. At this time, I'd like for them to stand up and introduce. I have a large family. I'm married into a large family. And so if you don't mind, I'd like for y'all to stand up, please. Family, friends, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge my wife, Charlene. My son Drew, his fiancee Miranda, my son David, his wife Cassie, my brother-in-law Blake, his son Nick, his other son Sam, his wife Stacy, my brother-in-law Brad, and one of my dear and longest friends, Mr. Roger Weeks. Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. I love you and appreciate you. Lord help me if I missed one of them. Right? I don't think I did. My wife would be looking at me kind of strangely right now. I also have some very special people with me tonight, very, very special, and that is Team AHS. And if y'all would please stand at this time. Coach Green. You are truly a dream team. And I'm going to try to do this without crying. I told you I would, and I'm going to. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, each one of you, in your own right, individually are superstars, but collectively, you are amazing, and you're doing a great work. You're doing great things. Thank you so much for your support, your devotion, and just the level of excellence you bring each and every day. And so in a few minutes, I'm hoping you'll help me with a little hounds on three. But I want to thank you sincerely. Thank you for everything. Thank you. I want to say a special thank you to all of my remarkable colleagues. I just am amazed at the level of skill, the talent and ability, but most of all, the compassion, the love, and the care that our colleagues, my colleagues, give to our students and our staffs each and every day. I'm extremely proud of them and proud to have been counted among them. I'd also like to acknowledge some great leaders that have been role models and mentors during my time working for the Polk County School Board. Gail McKenzie, Sherry Nickel, David Lewis, Joel Whitten, Ann Tankson, Allison Kelpfleisch, Ernest Joe, John Small, John Wilson, Dave Baker, the list doesn't go much longer. Philip Likes, Mike, and a dear friend, Mike Coombs. If we could give them a nice round of applause, they have mentored a lot of leaders in this There's so many others that I owe a great, such a great debt of gratitude. I'm so thankful for their investment in me. Last but not least, I want to give a hounds on three to the students, the staff, and the community of Arvindale High School. Now's the time to stand. All right, here we go. Hounds on three, hounds on three. One, two, three. You did good. I told them if they just hung me out to dry and didn't say anything, it'd be a rough day at school tomorrow. It'd be rough. I want Arvindale, the community of Arvindale and Arvindale High School, and the Bloodhound Nation to know that they will forever remain in my heart. I absolutely, unequivocally love my hounds. As I move forward, you will hear me say often, I absolutely, unequivocally love the students of Polk County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. That concludes the new administrator announcements for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and congratulations to our new administrators. So moving on to our regular agenda. We'll give you, yeah, we'll allow a minute for the folks to leave if they'd like to do so.
You can sing for us.
No.
No? Okay, I tried.
Oh, I wasn't saying.
Poetry?
I can show you that.
Do an interpretive dance.
There we go. That's neat. What are you?
Oh, I can clear.
Oh, Sarah Bass got a great voice, don't you?
I don't know who you're talking about.
We just might have to find one of these meetings, right?
You can just break into something. Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the franchise agreement with the Florida Virtual School for the 2018-2019 school year.
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? The motion on the floor is approval of the renewal of the franchise agreement with Florida Virtual School for the 2018-2019 school year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next regular agenda item is approval of the Polk State College Dual Enrollment Addendum Acceleration and Innovation Agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Polk State College Dual Enrollment Addendum Acceleration and Innovation Agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Bridges, I will be abstaining from voting on this item due to my relationship with Polk State College. The paperwork is completed and will be timely filed. The next item is acceptance of the City of Fort Meade Public Roads Right-of-Way Easement at Lewis Elementary. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is acceptance of the City of Fort Meade Public Roads Right-of-Way Easement at Lewis Elementary. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, I'm recessing the regular school board meeting for purposes of public hearing and vote on the charter schools. So if there's anyone who would like to come forward at this time and make comments about the charter school renewals, please do so. Renewal contracts? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is approval of this Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred's Charter Contract Renewal. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Sorry. I got distracted by all the champs coming in. I touched on this a bit this morning. I'll be a little briefer, but just wanted to, I've raised concerns about Discovery's retention rate, how many children they either dismiss or that leave voluntarily. The number we were given for last year was 60, which is a lot of kids. I think when you look closely at that number, it's a school with a 17% black population, yet black students make up 39% of the dismissals. I think that's very troubling. If you're doing the math on that, Discovery middle dismissed about 10% of its black population last year. I'm not going to vote for that. I'm not going to vote to ratify that. I don't know how the rest of the board's going to go on this. I actually talked to the head of DOE, Choice, asked him point-blank, is it legal for a school to get rid of 60 kids? You know, get rid of 36 and sort of, because it's a bad fit, have another 24 leave? And he said, I don't know. You know, I think that's kind of telling about how charter law is. He did say that we needed to be fair to the school, which I took as an interesting comment. Anyway, I'm going to vote against, I'm going to vote against this for that reason. I will acknowledge that they've put something into the contract that reflects on retention a little bit. Well, you know, there's one other thing I want to add. Right after we had the first discussion about this a few weeks back, I got an email from a parent at Discovery whose child had been disciplined for saying inappropriate things. And she was threatened in the email with dismissal for her child. They have since had a meeting in which that got cleared up. And, I mean, my feeling is that meeting only happened because they got caught. I think this happens all the time there. And I'm not going to vote to support it, and I hope that they will change their behavior. I feel certain they'll be able to get whatever renewal they want. State doesn't care about this. But I'm not going to be part of it, and I hope that a little bit of public shaming will help. And finally, you know, I think we all live and die by the stupid school grades system. They're scraping 60 kids out of their school, and they still can't get to A. It's been a B and a C for the last four, 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 four years. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Harris?
I also will not be supporting this for two reasons. One, I don't believe in 15-year contracts as in the best interest of the public. Two, the public has empty seats at Tennerock High School. There is no reason to fund additional seats at Discovery when you have unused seats at a pre-existing high school on the north end of the county. There is no reason to spend tax dollars to expand the number of seats when you already have empty seats that could be filled in the north end of Polk County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any further comments? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Discovery Academy of Lake Alfred's Charter Contract Renewal. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of Polk Charter Academy's new charter contract. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Would this be the time to let everybody know we're going to do our thing later?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Townsend?
Well, I was going to let you do that, being as chair. I mean, I'll.
Well, I think Mr. Bridges is going to read it for us at the appropriate time.
I'd be delighted. I would suggest that if you're going to do it, you do it before you take a vote on the contract.
Okay, then would you be kind enough to read that for us? Mr. Bridges?
The last work session, the board asked that a resolution be prepared having to do with the approval of the Polk Charter Academy application. Resolution 2017-2018-9, court mandated approval of the Polk Charter Academy application. Whereas the Constitution of the State of Florida vests in local district school boards the authority to operate, control, and supervise all free public schools within the school district, whereas the laws of the State of Florida provide a detailed process for the approval or denial of charter school applications by local district school boards. Whereas Polk Charter Academy applied to become a charter school in Polk County, Florida on 1 August, 2016, and whereas the Polk County School District conducted a thorough and rigorous evaluation of the application of Polk Charter Academy, whereas the Polk Board, the School Board of Polk County, Florida denied the application by unanimous vote on 20 September, 2016, citing as reasons therefore that the application to replicate a high-performing charter school did not materially comply with statutory requirements and in fact materially misrepresented the status of the applicant to the extent that it represented the applicant operated a high-performing charter school subject to replication. And whereas the corporate entity identified as the applicant did not in fact operate a high-performing charter school subject to replication. Whereas the corporate entity identified as the applicant was legally related to a corporate entity that did operate a high-performing charter school subject to replication. Whereas the school board also cited as basis for denial, the applicant's failure to include an expense projection that included full accounting of the cost of operation, failure to provide a clear description of the students the school would serve, failure to adequately ensure enrollment of and services to students with disabilities, inclusion of inappropriate provisions for the dismissal of students, failure to adequately demonstrate the capacity to govern a charter school in Polk County, failure to provide evidence of an arms-length relationship with its education services provider, failure to provide adequate evidence that the school would serve a diverse student population, failure to provide evidence of community support, and failure to outline a reasonable transportation plan to serve all students. Whereas the applicant successfully appealed the school board's denial of its application to the State Board of Education, and whereas the school board took appeal of the state board's decision. Whereas the Second District Court of Appeal for the State of Florida affirmed the state board's decision per curiam. And whereas it is the considered position of the school board of Polk County that the application did not and does not meet the requirements for approval of a high-performing charter school replication application, notwithstanding the opinion of the court. And whereas it is further the position of the school board of Polk County, Florida that approval of the application of Polk Charter Academy to open in South Lakeland is not in the best interests of the students, parents, and citizens of Polk County, does not offer any unique or innovative program not already available in the community, will result in excess student stations in South Lakeland. will result in excess student stations in South Lakeland while not contributing to the relief of overcrowding in other areas of the district, and should not be approved for all the reasons above stated. And whereas the School Board of Polk County, Florida, being fully advised in the premises, understands that despite firmly held misgivings and factual and legal disagreements, is obliged to carry out the mandates of the State Board of Education and of the Second District Court of Appeals of the State of Florida. Therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Polk County, Florida, hereby reluctantly accedes to the orders of the Florida State Board of Education and of the Second District Court of Appeal of the State of Florida, approves the Polk Charter Academy application and authorizes the negotiation of an appropriate charter school contract as required by Florida law duly passed and adopted at a regular public meeting this 15th day of May 2018 by the School Board of Polk County, Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges, for reading that into the record. And in short, our school board advised that this particular charter was not appropriate or advantageous for our community. Nevertheless, the Department of Education has mandated that we approve and enter into negotiations for a contract for this particular charter school. And we simply wanted to send a message that we are not pleased with that outcome. So are there any further comments?
Just adding to that.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you, sir. On the basis of principle, you just heard me say that it is not in the best interest of taxpayers to fund additional seats in an area of the county where they're not needed. The same thing applies as you just heard in this case. This particular charter group wants to expand and add a school in the southwest corner of the county. We have approached them and offered approval for a northeast portion of the county where we have desperate need for additional seats, and they have declined. It is not in the best interest of taxpayers to authorize this charter when we have needs in another part of the county and this group refuses to put a school in the area where the need is. They want to put a school, South Lakeland, without providing transportation and only a two-to-four mile attendance zone, and that's not where we need the seats. Based on principle, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, Mr. Townsend?
None of us support it, but it being directly ordered by the law as defined by a court. So I think that there's a willingness to assent to law here to some degree. Secondly, I just wanted to add for everybody that this charter school is... Last time I checked, and it's a little difficult to keep track of all their names, but they were run by a thing called the Profitable Group. Literally, it's called the Profitable Group. It's a for-profit school. And there's a legislator, James Grant, who has some sort of affiliation with it. Again, these things shift there, who's on what at what time. So if I'm out of date, I apologize. But just so you know, I just wanted that entered into the record as well.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, are there any further comments from the board? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Polk Charter Academy's new charter contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, pardon me, did you have a vote on the resolution?
Well, I thought that was incorporated in this vote.
I would suggest go ahead and have a vote.
All right, so... So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read by Mr. Bridges.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion and a second, any further comments? So the motion on the floor is approval of the resolution as read by Mr. Bridges, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So at this time, this portion of the meeting related to a public hearing for charter school contracts and the vote on charter school contracts is closed, and our regular school board meeting is reconvened. And it's time for our superintendent's report.
Testing season is a very stressful time for our students. That's why it means so much when our teachers and school administrators go above and beyond to encourage our students. This year, I'm proud to report that many of our students hosted pep rallies to encourage... Many of our schools hosted pep rallies to encourage our students. Others created motivational signs that greeted students at the car and bus lines. One of the inspiring notes reminded students that they were supported and loved. Tonight, students from Westwood Middle have come to share what their school administrators did to encourage them and what a difference it made.
Good evening Superintendent Bird and the distinguished school board members. Thank you Superintendent Bird for the opportunity of presenting our school on your agenda. I am Trae Ann Ellington, a sixth grader at Westwood. And I have been selected to represent nearly 750 students by introducing what our staff and administration have done to motivate students for the FSA. Our school's leaders went above and beyond to make sure we were overly prepared for the FSA. We had wristbands, towels, shirts, pencils, and even posters to motivate students for the FSA. They even reached out to several celebrities to motivate our diverse student body. Their efforts didn't stop there. With the help of chorus teachers and students, a video was composed to... To show their commitment to our success. So without delay, please sit back, relax, and watch the greatest school on earth.
Finally, where have you been?
I'm just so frustrated.
What are you frustrated for? We haven't even got started. I told you we were doing data chats. Come on over, let's talk about it, let's talk about it. All right, have a seat. All right, I just need you to calm down. All right, just calm down. Here's your math scores. Okay? This is what you did as a fifth grader, this is where you scored, all right? To go up a level as a sixth grader, look.
That's not far.
No, that's not far, so you all frustrated for what? You don't have much? You don't have many points, that's not a lot of points to gain, all right? And it's still proficient. That's what we're talking about, give me five. Only thing you need to focus on, three things you need to do the night before the test. Three things to do the morning before the test, all right? Are you calm now?
Yeah, I'm calm. Woo, I got this!
Ms. Board, school board members, we just want to thank you for all the support you've given Westwood Middle School. We have a little thank you for each of you tonight that we would like to give. It took a lot of people to put this video on, and we had to call for some reinforcements. We asked for the ITV department of the school board to come down. Called John Hill at Walbertale High School, and I have a nephew that's a junior there that is in ITV. So we borrowed him for the day and borrowed some of the resources that they had. But it takes a lot of people, the Winter Haven Gym that let us basically close their gym down for about three hours on a night. And just all the people that just came out of the woodwork to help. We had celebrities like Cedric the Entertainer, Miss Ali, and Ray Lewis that said shout-outs to our kids that we played each and every day of testing, and it just took a lot of people. I always want to give props to my regional superintendent, Mr. Bellamy, for always allowing us to think outside the box and do what we ever is best for kids. So thank you very much, Ms. Bird.
Thank you, Todd.
Love it. And I want to know who that beautiful voice is. Oh my gosh, I could listen to him sing all day long.
You can do better than that. It's good to see you, Bird.
You need a recording contract, son. You got a great voice.
Thank you, and you all are the greatest.
Now, I asked the question, was that lip sync or did he sing that? He actually sang that.
He sang it.
I want to read...
We actually, it's the music, we did for copyright, and we bought the sheet music. And you can do that all day long in a karaoke tape. And so we bought the sheet music so our chorus teacher, our chorus kids could sing it. Our chorus teacher sang it with a karaoke tape, which is how you got to work the copyright thing to actually publish a video. So we learned a lot, we all learned a lot during this process.
So come here, I want to read the back of the T-shirt to the audience. It says, "I float like a butterfly, sting like a bee, the Florida State assessment can't defeat me."
Thank you for sharing, and they are the greatest.
Absolutely, oh yeah. You might need two lines, though, y'all. Teachers might want to get back up here, there we go. Yep. Scoot down, yeah.
Thank you for sharing.
Our next work session will be held at 12:30 on Tuesday, June 19, 2018 in superintendent's conference room, followed by the school board meeting at 5:00 PM in the auditorium located at 1915 South Flor Avenue in Bartow. I also would like to wish all of our graduating seniors and graduates a congratulations as we start the full swing of graduations tomorrow. So congratulations to all of our seniors and their families. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I have for you is a request to advertise for public hearings on June 19, 2018. The item before you is couched in the singular, but each one of these will be a separate item of discussion with a separate vote. The first is charter school contract for Polk State College Lakeland Gateway to College Charter High School. The next one is exceptional student education policies and procedures, the student progression plan, and the rezoning of Given Street Elementary School in Bartow, Florida. Each one of those will be a separate item with a separate vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bridges. So at this time, it would entertain a motion to approve the request to advertise public hearings for June 19, 2018 for the items as discussed by Mr. Bridges.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? So again, the motion on the floor is to approve the request to advertise for public hearings for June 19, 2018, charter school contract Polk State College Lakeland Gateway to College Charter High School, exceptional student education policies and procedures, student progression plan, and rezoning of Given Street Elementary School, Bartow, Florida. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item I have for you is Resolution 2017-2018-8, which is the school sales tax referendum. You will recall that the mechanism by which this is presented to the voters is a referendum is approved by the school board, then it is forwarded to the county, and the county, the Board of County Commissioners will cause it to be placed on the ballot for the general election in November. It is attached, if you would like, I can read it into the record, or it is spread, it will be spread across the minutes in its entirety.
So what I will do is ask for a motion, and then I'll let you read it into the record if that's okay. So at this time, it would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2018-8, school sales tax referendum.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-2018-08, school sales tax referendum.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Bridges, would you read the resolution, please?
I'd be delighted, it has a lot of words. "The School Board of Polk County, Florida, Resolution 2017-2018-8. A resolution of the School Board of Polk County, Florida, calling for a referendum to be held on November 6, 2018, for the purpose of submitting to the duly qualified electors of Polk County, Florida, a question regarding the levy by the school board on all taxable transactions, the continuation of discretionary sales surtax of one half cent for the purpose of financing the cost of fixed capital expenditures or fixed capital costs associated with the construction of new schools, renovation, expansion, and modernization of existing schools, which have a useful life expectancy of five or more years, for the acquisition of land, land improvements, design and engineering costs related thereto, maintenance of school board-owned facilities, security projects for the safety of students and campuses, upgrades to technology, including the servicing of bond indebtedness..." to technology, including the servicing of bond indebtedness, providing for proper notice of such election authorizing certain incidental actions, and providing for an effective date." That's the summary. Whereas Section 212.0556 Florida Statutes 2017 provides that the School Board in each county may levy pursuant to resolution conditioned to take effect only upon approval of a majority vote of the electors of the county who are voting in the referendum, the extension of a discretionary sales surtax not to exceed one-half cent. And whereas there is an existing need to provide a financing source for fixed capital expenditures or fixed capital costs to construct new schools, renovate, expand, and modernize existing schools, the continued maintenance and improvements of all school facilities throughout Polk County, which have a useful life expectancy of five or more years, for land acquisitions, land improvement, design and engineering costs related thereto, security projects to provide for the safety of our students and campuses, and retrofitting and providing for technology implementation, including hardware and software for the various sites within the school district. And whereas the School Board has designed a tentative 15-year capital improvement plan for use of the surtax proceeds combined with all other available revenue sources for fixed capital expenditures or fixed capital costs to construct new schools, renovate and expand and modernize existing schools, the continued maintenance and improvements of all school facilities throughout Polk County, which have a useful life expectancy of five years or more, for land acquisitions, land improvement, design and engineering costs related thereto, security projects to provide for the safety of our students and campuses, and retrofitting and providing for technology implementation, including hardware and software for the various sites within the school district. And whereas surtax revenues may be used for the purpose of servicing bond indebtedness to finance projects authorized by the law, and any interest accrued thereto may be held in trust to finance such projects. However, neither the proceeds of the surtax nor any interest thereto shall be used for operational expenses. And whereas pursuant to Subsection 212.0556D Florida Statutes 2017, the School Board upon approval of the discretionary sales surtax by a majority of the electors shall implement a freeze on non-capital local school property taxes at the millage rate imposed in the year prior to the implementation of the surtax for a period of at least three years from the date of imposition of the surtax. This freeze provision shall not apply to existing debt service or required state taxes or millage levies. And whereas the surtax revenues shall be collected by the Florida Department of Revenue pursuant to the law and shall be distributed to the School Board in accordance with the provisions of Florida law. And whereas Section 212.0556 Florida Statutes 2017 provides that the discretionary sales surtax shall be conditioned to take effect upon approval by a majority of the vote of the electors of the county voting in a referendum, the School Board requests the Board of County Commissioners of Polk County, Florida, to place this matter on the ballot for a general election to be held on November 6, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Section 212.0556 Florida Statutes 2017, the School Board of Polk County, Florida, does hereby adopt this resolution, conditioned to take effect on January 1, 2019, only upon approval of a majority vote of the electors of Polk County, Florida, voting in a referendum to be held on November 6, 2018. Be it further resolved that the School Board shall annually review and adopt a 15-year capital outlay plan revised as needed based on changing local needs as dictated by student enrollment growth, facilities condition, facilities improvements, educational requirements, and construction costs, and based on the 15-year discretionary sales surtax proceeds along with other revenue sources. Be it further resolved that the title and language of the ballot shall be as follows: Continuation of countywide school one-half cent sales surtax for capital improvements to educational facilities. Shall the Polk County School Board continue to levy a countywide one-half cent sales surtax for the next 15 years to be used for capital expenditures to improve student and campus safety, renovate, expand, and modernize existing schools and facilities, upgrade technology and security projects, and for new construction for growth, including the purchase of land for the overall improvement of facilities for student achievement and well-being, to become effective January 1, 2019. And there's a blank for the one-half cent sales tax and a blank against the one-half cent sales tax. Be it further resolved that the Chairman and Superintendent of Schools are authorized to request the Board of County Commissioners to place this matter on the ballot for a referendum to be held November 6, 2018, and be it further resolved that the Chairman and Superintendent of Schools are empowered to make Scrivener's revisions, which may be necessary or required to accomplish the purposes of this resolution, including revisions mandated by the Supervisor of Elections, without further action of the School Board, done and ordered by the School Board of Polk County, Florida, this blank day of blank, it will be the 15th day of May 2018, the School Board of Polk County, Florida, by Lynn Wilson, Chairman, and attested to by Jacqueline M. Burda, Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges, and I hope, I'm going to give you a break. I hope we don't ask you to speak again for a while. Thank you for reading that.
Certainly.
I would like to offer that this had, I think this is very similar language to that which was used in 2003. It has been reviewed and vetted by Ms. Usher, our Director of Facilities, as well as the consultant that we used for the survey, and that was paid for, by the way, by the World Class Group out of Lakeland. So, we have had some eyes on this to make sure that it accomplishes all that we want to accomplish.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just point out, it is substantially similar. It is, it is different to the extent that it is a continuation of the original sales tax, not the adoption of a new one, and it does make provision for capital security improvements, which is, which is of critical importance.
Of critical importance. Thank you, Mr. Bridges, for pointing that out. Are there any further comments by the Board? So, the motion on the floor is to approve the Resolution 2017/2018-8, school sales tax referendum, as read by Mr. Bridges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, the third thing I have for you has to do with the House Bill 7069 litigation. I prepared a memorandum for the School Board. We've had previous discussion in what I would propose. Apparently, this is my night for reading, but it is a brief memo and would probably explain the situation very well for the record. In August of 2017, the Board voted to approve joining 12 other Florida school districts in litigation, challenging the constitutionality of House Bill 7069, and authorized an initial expenditure of $25,000 to fund litigation through the trial phase. The various participating districts selected the firm of Hush Blackwell to represent them in the trial court. In April of this year, the Circuit Court in Tallahassee granted the state's motion for summary judgment, which is now being appealed. At least 10 of the original plaintiff districts have indicated their intent to participate in the appeal. The districts participating in the appeal have selected Branach and Humphreys, a Florida firm specializing in appellate practice with offices in Tampa, Tallahassee, and Sarasota to pursue this appeal. It is my recommendation to you this evening that the School Board approve participation in the appeal. The case is styled, "The School Board of Alachua County, Florida," et al., et al. is the abbreviation for all 12 other counties, versus "Florida Department of Education," et al., which is abbreviation for all the defendants that we've sued. It authorized the Superintendent and General Counsel to execute all necessary documents in connection with the appeal and the expenditure of up to an additional $25,000 in fees and costs toward the total cost of the litigation. You will recall the initial funds that you approved were the estimated pro-rata of the district through appeal. It is, it is the, it is our best guess that this amount will, I'm sorry, the original 25 was through the trial phase. This will fund the appellate phase. And just so you'll know, the two districts, who are our closest twins in size, Pinellas County and Lee County, have both already authorized an additional 25. So, it is, it is our best estimate that that will, that that will be the total of the funding that is required, but that gets us into the appellate court where the decisions are made.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve allocating up to an additional $25,000 to continue the litigation challenging the constitutionality of House Bill 7069, as indicated by Mr. Bridges. So moved.
Second.
So, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Quick question for Wes. The single subject aspect of that, is that included? That hasn't been ruled in trial?
Right, that case is ongoing. There was, it was filed as a bifurcated action, and the single-subject litigation continues, and Hush Blackwell still has that, and as soon as we have word on that, I'll get, I'll get that back to you. This is, this is on the constitutionality of the subject matter of the statute, to the extent that it is our position that it erodes the authority of local school districts to manage, control, and direct the public schools in their district. The other litigation, for those listening, has to do with the technical rule that requires each bill to have a single subject. As I recall, House Bill 7069 was something like 255 pages long, so it, there's a case to be made that it might contain more than one subject.
Yeah, just, I think we should certainly continue with this. I think it's not at all surprising that, I think that the trial judge's ruling was that laws like this are presumed to be constitut, which didn't really resolve any of the core underlying issues. And I think additionally, you know, we're just in a weird relationship with the state, and this will provide us some clarity one way or another. Hopefully, it's clarity around common sense and common purpose, but I think it's important to continue to get some sort of reasonable resolution so we know what the rules are. I mean, as you saw me talking about discovery, you know, that's not directly related to this, but it does relate to some degree to what our powers are as a board to affect, you know, how schools of all kinds are operated here. So, I think it's important to follow this through to the conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Any further comments from the Board? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve allocating up to an additional $25,000 to continue the litigation challenging the constitutionality of House Bill 7069, as indicated by Mr. Bridges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Do we have a report from Mrs. Matthews? Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Mr. Townsend?
Board comments? Okay. I wanted to follow up real quick with the folks from Given Street. I appreciate you coming. As you can see, we're not holding a vote tonight to decide what to do, but I also don't want to mislead you. I mean, I think it's very unlikely that there will be an outcome different than this outcome. So, one of the things I talk about a lot is stakeholder managed management. I'm not in a position to say that we've managed that badly or not. I don't know enough to say, to say, to say that. If you feel like it's been badly managed, I apologize for that. And, you know, I think this is not a move that anybody is considering in a light way. It's not good to do, to do this, and we also know how long a lot of you guys have worked there, the lives you've given there, and we appreciate it. You guys know the reasons that we would be considering this, and we'll just address that down the line further. But I thank you for coming, and I thank you for your, for your commitment to your, to your school. Secondarily, you know, we had a bit of an interesting conversation that we started to have today about integration and segregation and how we can address some of those things moving ahead, and it led me to, I went to one of, I think, one of our most successfully and one of our strongest integrated schools, which is Dixie Land Elementary. I attended, actually served as a judge for their speech contest a week or so ago, and it's a bunch of fifth graders, and the seven or eight, I guess, eight or nine finalist, all different types of kids, all different ethnic backgrounds, all different first languages even, got up there and spoke in front of their peers about really difficult things. I mean, I was, it was, it was powerful. The young man who won talked about something very, very personal to him in an incredibly clear, clear voice. And what I was struck by is all these different types of kids, there are probably 150 kids watching them in the, in the lunchroom, and how supportive they were of their colleague, their fellow students who were sort of bearing themselves, bearing a lot of vulnerability to them. And we talk a lot about bullying and how, how kids are, you know, there's, we talk a lot about what kids do wrong when they're, when, when they're 11. It was pretty incredible what these kids did right, and it gave me a lot of hope for the future of the country, of the county, and, you know, I think when we talk about integration, that's, that's the best of it, and it is something that we should strive for, and I just want to say thank you to the Dixie Land folks for inviting me, and thanks to those kids for being brave and being supportive of each other. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. First of all, I would like to do a shout-out to Davenport School of the Arts. The students at DSA have been very actively working all year trying to raise money for Alex's Lemonade Stand. They've been selling lemonade at every single event at school, every production, every art opening, you name it, and they're selling lemonade. And it was an honor last week to see the children present a check to the Alex's Lemonade Stand group of folks, which are working on cancer research for children, and they presented a check in the amount of $16,000. So, I think that's really incredible and deserves a round of applause for all those It's just amazing what our kids can do when they put their minds to it, but I'm telling you, I've never seen so much lemonade on that campus as I have this past year for a great cause. Additionally, of course, I want to do a shout-out to Mr. Robert Mosenberg and Ms. Elfont for the wonderful production of Lang King. It was an amazing musical. I know a lot of my colleagues had the opportunity to see it. The kids did outstanding, as always, and it would certainly make you proud. So, just really great work, and thank you so much to our wonderful drama teachers that inspire our students to do their best every day. I recently attended the Polk County Builders Association, where they had their annual program and blueprint and model competition awards, and they do this on an annual basis, and they award scholarships to children throughout our county that work with them. And I was really shocked to see the number of scholarships that were awarded that evening, and I just want to do a shout-out to the Polk County Builders Association and the Polk County Builders Association Foundation for what they do to provide wonderful opportunities for our kids with this particular event that they do and this number of scholarships that they present to our students. So, thank you so much for being such a great partner, and I failed to mention, they indicated they've been a partner with Polk County Schools now for 23 years, impacting lives, changing lives, children, one child at a time. So, thank you so much for what you all do. I also recently attended the Haynes City Area Chamber of Commerce, their youth leadership graduation celebration, and each year, students are selected from the Northeast area high schools and are provided an opportunity to go into the community one day a month and learn about education and industry, culture and arts, and it culminates with a trip to Tallahassee to visit the Capitol and learn about how our government works. And so, then each year, there's a luncheon where each of those students are recognized, where they get to tell a little bit about what they learned from this experience, and then we also recognize the teacher and the paraprofessional of the year from every school in the Northeast area. So, it's wonderful, and I just want to thank the Haynes City Chamber for continuing that wonderful tradition, and once again, these are some of our future leaders that we're beginning to groom at this point in time. So, congratulations to all those students. And then recently, we had our Outstanding School Volunteer of the Year Awards Program, which recognizes a student, an adult, and a senior who volunteers in each of our schools. And I was pretty amazed when we were told that this year in, our school year right now, our 1718 school year, our volunteers amassed 179,000 volunteer hours in our schools, and I just, I just can't believe those numbers. When you think about how many people are working in our schools throughout our district, it's absolutely amazing, and where would we be without those volunteers throughout our schools? So, a special thank you to each of you out there who have volunteered in some capacity, and if you are someone who has some extra hours, whether you're a young student, a young student... and if you are someone who has some extra hours, whether you're a young student, a youth, an adult, or a senior, and would love to get involved, if you would just reach out to one of the schools, maybe in your neighborhood that you're closest to, and volunteer your time, you will make such a major difference in the lives of a child. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mrs. Sellers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of things. Thank you to Mrs. Fields for inviting me to go with the academies tour that she had with the mayor of Lakeland, and I've been with these academies since I've been on the Board, watching them grow, but I'm never cease to being amazed when you tour these academies and you hear the students. The tours are always led by the students, they answer your questions, they tell you in great detail what they do. They are so focused, and I want to thank Mr. John Small because he started these academies. He instilled the high quality that he had expected from these academies, and I also want to thank Dr. Huteck, who has done even more than you could expect. I knew that Mr. Small had big shoes to fill, but you have filled them. Your vision to continue these academies is wonderful. I'm telling you, when you talk to the students, you would be amazed if you were standing before kids that were about to graduate from college, the sophistication and the focus and where they know they want to go for their future. So, I look forward. I want to thank the Home Builders, that 23 years, they've been a partner with the Construction Academy at Bartow, and that night, they announced, "We're going to open four more construction academies," but we could not do it without their support, because it's those business partnerships that allow us to open the academies. So, it's a busy time of year. We're all going 20 different directions every evening. Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. I know how exhausting this job is at this time. You always have a smile, you're always positive, so just nine more days, I think. It's been a tough year, as you've said, but our kids, we've put our students first, and I see that happening more and more and more. So, thank you. And to Given Street, I want to assure you, this has been a hard decision on the part of the district. We have the students in mind first, and I think today at the work session, when Mrs. Byrd and her staff talked about Given Street, you could feel the emphasis on doing what's best for the students and making sure. It sounds like they're looking at almost every student individually about where they're going, what we're doing, and I know we have this decision to be made in June. Like Mr. Townsend, we're all digesting all of the information and know that we're trying to do what's best for the district and for our kids, but I too appreciate every bit of work that you've put into that school. I live here in Bartow, so I know, I know some of you, and thank you, and just go through this process with us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Ms. Reynolds?
I just have two quick ones tonight. Last week, a few of us attended, our three special needs schools do their graduation together, and it is one of the most humbling and impactful experiences I think any of us get. I think there were 10 students that graduated, and there were probably 200 people there, which just speaks volume for how many, you know, these kids have such great support systems, and they're really incredible children. And also, Silver Garland was last week, which is always a lot of fun, and just hearing some of the things that these high school seniors are doing as service projects are mind-boggling, and things that I don't know I would have ever even thought existed in high school, raising, you know, getting shoes donated for children in Jamaica or other countries, that, things that I would never have thought to do as a 17-year-old kid. So, just kudos to every student that was nominated, because it really is an exciting time for them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Harris?
In the friendly competition among board members category, I would just like to point out and thank and congratulate three different awards that occurred in District 7. The Teacher of the Year from Lake Gibson High School, Michelle Dinwiddie. Student Logo Design Team, Almerdell High School. And our new Deputy Superintendent, John Hill, from Almerdell High School. I challenge you, what is your next district's competition award? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Don't hurt your arm.[1796.63][1796.63](laughter)